All right, I'd like to call the Board of Library Trustees meeting for February 27, 2024 to order at 6:50 PM.
With apologies.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor, right? Any discussion, all in favor? Okay. Karen?
Okay. So we did get one donation from Lusanna Martins-Hoder. She's donated before. She's a regular here, so thank you to her. Some recap of February programming. We've been really happy with turnout for February programs. You know, our scavenger hunts, those are continuing to be popular. You know, Groundhog Day story time. We had two service projects for seniors. We had 40 middle schoolers and teenagers for those. Percy had 29 at the Magnetic Field Day event. We had 32 for a craft supply swap. So, you know, doing really well in February. But the big news, we have the Bruins PJ Drive kickoff.
Awesome.
Huge success. We're so happy. Everything went really smoothly. They handled everything for us, pretty much. And we had about 80 people here. They posted so many photos. I don't know if you saw that we did a whole bunch of photos and things. So, you know, we thank you. Senator Brady came. Representative DeCoste came. Lisa Green, the town administrator, stopped by briefly. And then Blades went over to the senior center, stopped by over there and took photos, which is really, which is great. They loved it, so.
Cupcakes for everybody?
Yeah, cupcakes and cookies and goody bags and yeah, so. And then we had 75 pairs of pajamas donated, so we're still collecting till the 15th, but. Coming up in March.
And just to say, Andrea from the.
Oh, MBLC.
MBLC was here and afterward she was like, "It's really good to see like how the library works and the flow."
Yeah, I actually gave her a tour and showed her like kind of what, you know, what's working, what's not.
Yeah.
So.
That was helpful to have them here.
Saw some excellent pictures, yes.
Yeah. Coming up in March, we're doing our own version of March Madness. So we're having a bracket style competition for picture books. So we're gonna start with 16 and then have one winner. People will be able to vote. And Percy's gonna have his first cookbook club coming up. He had an interest meeting, so it's official, yeah, it's the official start of it. With Marie Casey funds, we're doing the No So Bunny Treat bag.
Oh, it's catchy.
Oh, I'm sorry, catchy.
I was like, "Who's Marie Casey?" My mother.
Sorry. Julia's booked an Intro to Astrology class. It's a local resident who does that in various, you know, libraries and other venues. Mass Audubon, one of our volunteers, her husband works for Mass Audubon. They're gonna be doing a birding presentation and then a field trip to Smithy's Bog. And then we're getting ready for the solar eclipse in April, so Percy's doing some pinhole projector crafts for that, so. A lot of great stuff coming up.
Good.
Yep.
We are continuing our moving around. So Jude's been great with assembling furniture, moving bookcases. He's gonna, they're gonna be repainting this room, so we're gonna go with Benjamin Moore linen white. So it's a, like this is a little yellow. It's a little bit whiter, so we're gonna do the whole room and my office as well. Just kind of, you know, make it a little brighter and hopefully to eventually paint the benches, get some new cushions, kind of just boost things up a little bit. Yeah.
Any plans to do anything with the ceiling?
Yes, we actually just got some new tiles, so they're gonna be replacing the damaged ones, so. Unfortunately, we did not get the sustainable grant for the LED lights, but Charlie is looking into other possibilities to see if we can move forward with that. The toddler nook is coming together. We are still have a couple things that we've ordered that are on the way, but we've already seen kids using it, so. Yeah, so it's looking really good.
It's cute, yeah.
Finishing up our, the community room AV and digital signage projects. There's a few things that needs to be cleared up with those. That should be done in the next couple weeks. Percy's on his way to becoming a notary, so his application was approved. Oh, sorry, do you have a question?
Just one thing on the AV. I know when Ted Weinstein was here.
Yes, it was an issue. I think it was his laptop, because we tried several other laptops and they worked okay.
And then the poor thing, he had to use the stick to move his presentation and he thought he was gonna leave with Coughleton syndrome.
Yeah, so.
Trying to flip all of the screens.
I think it was his laptop, so we might want to try to make it so that people use the equipment we have here, our equipment, instead of their own, because this is too variable, so.
I was curious. I did speak to Julia just in passing tonight and she mentioned how, yeah, because of his laptop, they had to make it a PDF. So it isn't what would be usual, I guess, the usual case.
And I think he was rushing as opposed to letting it like connect the pen, the pen to connect to the page.
Yeah.
You know, he was just expecting his little magic wand to work. But he was fabulous.
If you're gonna have people bring in using the flash drives for the computer here, you, my firm just actually outlawed, you're not allowed, no.
Yeah, I mean, we probably do it like just through like the internet, like they would like.
Download it to an onsite.
Or send it to us, or yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or like not connect to our, like, because you can plug a USB directly into the device instead of our, like, our laptop.
Yeah, the concern is that they're downloading a virus with that.
Right, yeah, yeah. And then, so yeah, Percy's gonna become a notary. His application was approved. He just has to do the final touches of that. And then some update on the catalog, the catalog app. So there is, it looks like the functionality is gonna be returning soon. So I know a lot of patrons have been asking about that, so that's, they've managed to figure something out with that, so. Any questions? So next would be evaluation.
So did everyone get a chance to read through the evaluation?
Yes.
I wrote it up from everybody's comments. Well, the first part is what Karen has accomplished this year. And then was her own assessment. Now, I'm going over the evaluation form that I have to send to the town. So was there any questions, comments on anything?
Kind of a short list. This is kind of a short list of things she did. It only went on for pages. I'm being sarcastic. It was truly inspiring.
Thank you. Linda?
I have one observation, I guess. I felt there was a little disconnect between Karen's self-assessment and the leadership and what we put. Karen assessed herself, "Well, is it true?" And we did outstanding. And when you read the description from the town, I think we were pretty accurate. I don't know if we want to consider that Kelly can rethink her self-assessment. I think she takes a lot of initiative in the work she does. She's self-directed, self-motivated. Proactive approach.
Two is satisfactory.
Well, I just felt like, like, I guess like a lot of what I do is like, we're like a part of a team. And so it's not just me. Like, I feel like a lot of things come from other people and I don't want to take credit for everything and so.
But you're the director. You're supposed to take credit. You have to take the, you know, the downside of that. You should take the credit when you can.
You take the initiative to lead your staff, I think. The staff really responds to your leadership, I would say.
I'm.
When you set their expectations, they might do some self-directed things. But you set the expectation. I don't know. It sounds like some other people might.
I agree. I think you need to know where you're at.
Yeah.
You could do that over.
Yep, we'll do that.
Okay. All right.
There was one other.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. There was one other thing I wasn't sure if we wanted to possibly reword.
What page do you want?
The leadership remarks. The last paragraph that starts with Karen Foster's department in the origin workplace. The second sentence?
Yep.
It says, "Dealing with interpersonal staff issues may be challenging at times." I don't think the trustees were made aware of any difficulties, so.
Well.
If we weren't.
I have known.
Okay, right. But this is, I'll finish in.
Okay.
Well, community response. This is coming from all of the trustees and maybe we could reword that, that she handles interpersonal staff issues with aplomb grace. I don't know. Since we weren't aware of any interpersonal issues, maybe it shouldn't be addressed in this to the town administrators, my thinking.
Well, don't forget, this is a combination of what everyone responded to me.
It's supposed to represent all our thoughts, I thought.
Yes, but different, every, people respond, so I take what I feel is the best to put it in here. And she has, you know, every job comes with its ups and downs and. I don't know. How does anybody else feel?
I didn't know what it had to do with, so.
Okay. Well, so how do you think it should read, Linda?
Karen A. Lee deals with interpersonal staff issues which may occur, or something. You can word it better than that.
Okay, so.
I would rather just see that and not say that it's challenging at times where, I don't know if we need to bring that to the attention of the town administrator where it wasn't brought to our attention.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'll take out, "Dealing with interpersonal staff issues may be challenging at times, however," I'll take all that out.
You can just say Karen deals well with challenging or just interpersonal staff relationships. I don't know.
I'll just take it out.
Okay.
So anything else from anyone?
Well, overall, I thought.
I thought it was great.
We're excellent, yes.
Thank you.
Is this for a sheet? Do you have had to do a self-evaluation, Karen?
Yes, it's just starting to do evaluations, like townwide for people, so, yeah.
It's fun, isn't it? Okay. So I make a motion to accept the.
Go ahead. I just had, when, on your self-evaluation, number five, about taking a break from your work to be more present and seen by the general public. I had my thoughts before, sorry. You just feel like it's just, there's just so much juggling behind the scenes that you're not. I love the idea of you being there up at the circulation desk and everything. I thought that was, that was a great way to word that.
Yeah, I think just with the construction grant, it's definitely, it's gotten a lot worse in terms of like being able to. Like, yeah, I feel like I'm just like really focused on that and then other things that come up and then I'm not able to like be out front as much. So hopefully with the grant, you know, when that's kind of.
Settling down.
Settling down a little bit, that.
I appreciate that you pointed it out that way and that you, that you had a solution to it, so that was great. Okay, that's all.
Okay.
What about my comments? Did you send, do you want me to add?
Oh, yeah, afterwards, after I, like we've always done. Okay, I make a motion to accept the annual performance evaluation form for Karen Stouffer with an update on the next to last page. "Removing dealing with interpersonal staff issues may be challenging at this time, however."
Karen's updated.
Right, but that's a different.
That's the self-assessment.
Yeah.
So that has not been submitted yet?
No. I submit them all together.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you unanimous.
Who motioned it?
I did. You motioned.
Okay. So we have the drafts, which you looked at last month, for the ADEI policy. The only change was what Teresa suggested. Everything else was the same, so I don't know if people felt comfortable with it now. See if it's.
I have one possible wording change. In the first paragraph at the end, it says, "And to remedy the ways in which we are not living up to this committee, commitment." This is a policy that's going to be in place and hopefully going forward, there won't be a lot of ways in which we're not living up to this commitment. I'm not sure if they're currently out or not. Instead of "the ways," "any ways" or "remedy ways" in which, that implies there are ways. So could you remove the word "the" and either leave it out or change it to "any"?
I mean, I could just remove "the" if that's.
It's a slight difference, but.
No, remove "the ways," it sounds like there's a list somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion to accept the policy. I'll second it with the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And sustainability policy, that was the same. People seemed happy with that, so.
So you were second?
I had seconded, yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the Hanson Public Library Sustainability Policy.
I'll second it.
Any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All right, so new business. So we had two light poles. I think I had mentioned, it was my report last month, that one of them had, the bottom of it had cracked and had fallen over and one, another one had one piece of it that was loose and was tipping. So we had an electric company come and repair them. So we actually, thanks to Jude, he suggested that we contact their town's insurance company to find out if they would be willing, you know, able to pay for this in part. And they actually are. It is covered, so there is a $1,000 deductible, but the rest they will pay for. So I was hoping you just approved the $1,000 and then the insurance, a check is actually on the way, so for the remaining $3,250, so.
That's great. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
Unanimous.
All right. Yeah, pretty short agenda this month, but so next is the library building project, right onto that. We, I'll actually skip over and first we'll talk about the facility assessment. So Odenzello is, they were hoping to come tomorrow, but with the rain.
Oh, the wind.
Yeah, so they're actually gonna try to reschedule for Friday if possible to have, they're gonna have over the next few weeks.
Why aren't they coming tomorrow?
Because with the rain, so they were gonna have specialists come and analyze the building. They were gonna start outside and they can't have somebody on the roof with the rain.
We have all these specialists that are come.
So the next couple weeks, they'll be sending out different specialists, like outside envelope specialists and electrical specialists, plumbing, you know, all that kind of stuff. So that's what's gonna be coming up.
What are we, sorry, what are we on?
We're on the facility assessment update. We skipped over the other one for now. We'll look at that after, but. So, yeah, so they're gonna be coming out and, like I said, hopefully starting this Friday or early next week and have all the analysts look over the building, so. So, yeah, hopefully.
So who is coming?
Odenzello, it's all the, yeah, different consultants, you know, specialists.
Is that the beginning of their work?
Yes, yes, so they'll do that first.
Great.
Yep, so that's underway, so that's great.
Later this week.
Yes, or early next week, depending on when they can be scheduled, our specialists.
I'm writing very slow today.
And then just a grant application update. So Teresa and I are gonna schedule to meet again to talk, you know, kind of finish up the.
Start the shared use agreement.
Yeah, the, yeah, well, yeah, the official management plan, which now they're gonna, they're gonna change it to, in the future, to call it a shared use agreement, thanks to Teresa's recommendation, so. And then I'm gonna start on the statement of need. So there's like several questions that we have to answer, so I'll be working on that this month.
This is in the building program.
Yes, yeah.
What about the policies?
The construction grant, the construction.
Okay.
Yeah, so those, so the capital plan, I think they do have a new one that they sent, so I can use that. And I think that, I think it goes up to FY '29 or '30, so.
It has to go to '29, I think, yes.
Yeah, and then Lisa said that she has gotten the drafts of the drafts for our policies and that she hadn't, she hadn't looked at them yet, but she was going to start working on those and so. But I will check in again with her. We have a meeting next week, so I will ask her then what the status is. But I think they're just gonna, you know, put something together and then the board of selectmen, select board has to approve it. So that shouldn't be too long, I don't think, but I will check with her. And I think, and the funding scenarios, I think that was another thing. So I think there was only a few that we have to, you know, bonding and so that's pretty. I'll check in with Lisa and the town accountant on that. But I think we're in pretty good shape, so. Okay, any questions about any of that? All right, so the draft of the building program. So it's in a little bit better shape now with formatting. I think from the last time, the only major changes, or not major, but only changes were in the area descriptions. So obviously, you know, we're hopefully gonna approve it in March, at the March meeting. So you have another month to look it over. But I think there was a couple things to point out. Some of the changes came in the children's section. Ruth kind of refigured how seating was calculated. I think we changed the capacity for the story nook and the toddler creative play area. Let's see, what else we added?
These are changes from what you sent us previously, or just the ones that were incorporated? These were incorporated in the one that you just last sent us?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Think, let's see, what else did we add, change? There was a change to meeting rooms. Actually, an interesting conversation too with, I had with Representative DeCoste at the Bruins event. So apparently Norwell, we're talking about the Norwell Library. They do not have a flagpole at the Norwell Library. And I guess that's become an issue in the town, where people are like blaming back and forth, like how this happened. Some people think it's, you know, should be there or not. And so actually, I talked to Ruth, I said, you know, should that be something that we include? So she said, "Yeah." So, so that's in there. We've added that in. I, yeah, I don't know how that happened, but they, they do not have a flagpole. Just interesting.
Do we have one?
I'm sorry? We have, yeah, we have one now, yeah.
I thought we did.
I remember the way afterwards, it issued because the light wasn't working.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, sure, yeah, it's working out, but, yeah. But other than that, I think there was, I think it's, there was a lot of it was maybe just some rewording, but I think pretty much it's pretty similar to what you'd seen before. But, yeah, obviously look over it again. The numbers, I think that was one of the things that, some of the numbers hadn't matched up before and we went over them like five, six times now, so hopefully they do line up. But if anything's confusing, I don't know, did anybody have any comments right now?
Could we maybe discuss a couple things?
Yeah, sure, yeah, that's right, yeah.
One I had brought up to you, I think, in the email before and you were gonna talk to Ruth for, I don't know if you decided it wasn't important or what, maybe you can give me some feedback. The page that says Hanson Public Library today.
Page number?
Page 11.
Page 11?
Yes. Right under that heading, there are seven images. Shows library things, adventure passes, computers and printers, printing, kids, teens, meeting rooms, digital library. It's, to me, it seems like the library today is more than that and you'd wanna include adults if you're mentioning kids and teens and possibly preschool. Kids could possibly cover the preschool, but.
I think, well, so she took these from our website.
Right.
And I think it was just supposed to be like a quick snapshot. It's not supposed to cover everything. I mean, that's in the rest of the section.
I don't think, if it says above at the library today that it should be a snapshot, it's a mission myself. I don't know how anyone else feels.
So do you have a list of what you feel?
Well, at least adults, it would balance off the image to either two in each room.
Well, because we don't have images for those, so we would have to.
Well, where did those images come from?
Yeah, so we have to, I mean, we could create something.
Did the library staff create them?
Yeah, I think Julia created them.
It doesn't seem to be real difficult to do.
So what, what, what are the thoughts?
At least adults, I don't know. It's certain, the library certainly encompasses more than is shown.
I mean, it, it does bring.
Only adults, I think, is a big.
Adults.
I mean, community as far as like when you do the art show and things like that, that you are bringing, you know, and that's one of the big goals, is we're looking to become that catch-all place for the community.
So you mean one for adults, one?
We do already do it on a scale that is manageable within the space we have.
Yeah, I mean, you could fill in those two.
And you're like adults and then community, is that, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, but then you throw her, then you throw it off whack again.
Well, you could do three, three, and three possibly, if you came up with some ideas. If Julia was willing to work with you and Ruth and think what you might want is overall representations. Would you want preschool? I don't know. It could, it's a different.
I mean, early literacy, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the.
Because that takes in the thousand books plus the Beanie Babies, so, yeah.
So, yeah, maybe those three and then we can, that would be, add another row and stick something next to digital library.
Yeah.
Three, three, and three would look nice.
Whatever works for that layout.
Yeah, maybe too small to three.
Yeah, you don't want to make it unreadable.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then I had a question about current library site and other sites considered.
What page is that?
Page 36. Has it been some discussion previous to this? I might have just missed it, about the senior center relocated?
Well, that was one of the options that, I mean, if we end up, if they end up figuring out that like this building is, can be renovated, expanded for us, and then the senior center needed to move somewhere else. I mean, we want to keep open every, basically, every option.
There's been a lot of conversation with McQuan reuse, you know, from the start of all this with, you know, first it was senior housing and they paid for the senior center, a new senior center in front of, you know, where the school was. And then Tony came along and.
The three buildings at one point, didn't he?
Yes, yeah. But now the latest is the fields moving over to give the highway department more and depending upon what Odenzello says to us, whether we'll, well, this, if this building can withstand an addition, which is gonna be a massive addition, or should we just have a new building and the senior center could have this building and accommodate it to what they need? Because the other thing with the senior center, it's not like they're entitled to any grants or anything.
Right.
Like, see, we can get money various ways, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, they had considered putting a new, when they turned up the housing.
Has it been raised before?
Right, I didn't know if this sounded a little presumptuous of us to say in the event the senior center relocates, a relocation of one or both of the departments.
Yeah, I mean, they've talked about.
They talked about putting a senior center over there.
But that's off the board now.
Well, not, it's not, nothing has been voted on.
You don't know what is gonna happen.
I mean, I don't think it being here is like a surprise. It's never been talked about before because it has been at many meetings and at many phases of McQuan still. Maquon still standing.
Okay, so you don't feel that?
No.
It will alienate the senior center?
No, no, I mean.
No, because if, if anything, our goal is to make sure that they're carried along in this, in the wave of this.
Yeah. We had a.
And benefit.
Get more, yeah.
Yeah, we had a Maquon reuse meeting last month, or maybe it was the beginning of this month, and Mary was there, and we went over the history of that lot, and then Tony again reiterated his suggestions, but it hasn't been voted on.
I know, but if this, oh, excuse me.
So we have another meeting coming up in a couple of weeks.
Okay, it just seems that at this point, if we said we're gonna expand into the whole building, the senior center doesn't really have an option at this point.
No, we would expand that way, and they would have another expansion going that way.
No, I mean, I think this is the same, basically, if the town decides that, yes, they wanna go this route, but you know, and then have the senior center move somewhere else, that that's a possibility.
Yeah, I mean, if we were to have a new building, it's right next door.
Right.
But, you know.
I just really didn't think the relocation of the senior center was a viable option at this point, but that's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't know, that's, we don't know what's gonna happen, that's, you know.
At this point.
Right, and I mean, the cost of a new library, twenty million dollars, so the town will have to vote for a bond for ten million dollars, basically, so.
Right.
We don't know, I mean, there are a lot of things in the town that need to be taken care of, and essentially, we don't have the money for mostly anything, unfortunately, so. In the end, it'll be what, you know, and the thing is, you know, the seniors want it for us to have a library. I mean, they're one of our biggest supporters, and then if you get PTO and a few other groups, I think we can do okay, and they, people have to show up to vote. That's the big thing, I mean, the one fifty grant is a given, because it's gonna come from oppa funds, so I don't know why somebody would turn that down. And someone had suggested to me, oh, we take that from free cash, because then you're gonna see how the constituents really feel. But we'd rather take it from the oppa funds, because they can, if the, if we had it from free cash, if they voted no, we're done for another three to five years, so at least if we get it from oppa funds, it still doesn't mean that everything isn't going to be turned down, but we're more on our way, and we can start, yeah, informing the public on a regular basis.
Okay. Page forty-one or forty-two. You, due to, I can email you this, so this is something a little, I could probably just email you. Due to significant use of personal mobile devices and the opportunity of portable tablet devices to be borrowed for use within the library, I think maybe leave out the word tablet, going down. Further in the report, you do have a variety of portable technology devices, I don't think we wanna limit it to tablet necessarily.
Well, I don't mean just actual, I mean, like tablets, it's like tablets more like a general type of device, instead of, it doesn't just mean like an iPad, like it means like.
Could be.
A Kindle.
Well, like, not even that, but just like, it's kind of a broad, I mean, maybe that's, that's more like geeky talk, but like, it's, it doesn't just mean what, like, most people think of as tablet, I guess, is what I'm saying, so.
I mean, you're talking like, even like, little Game Boys or whatever, whatever the latest thing is.
Can you leave out the word tablet or? One, the portable devices.
Which, which paragraph?
Page forty-one or forty-two.
Yeah, that was one of the changes we made too, so.
Yeah.
What paragraph is it, Linda?
It's at the very bottom center.
Yes.
The access to, okay.
Yeah, it goes into. Later on, you have for a variety of portable technology devices, but here maybe you could just say for portable devices, because a lot of people do have ideas of tablet that don't seem to match what you think.
Yeah, okay.
And who knows too, going forward, what devices will be available?
I know.
However, I, I, I would say, if Ruth feels that that language is what has been in other reports for other libraries,
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think she'll be fine.
then I'm, I'm okay with it, so.
Removing it.
Okay.
And on area descriptions, that's one I really do wanna talk to the trustees and Karen about. Here are some pictures from Norwell Public Library in front. Under the description of, I'm talking page forty-four, I guess, forty-three and forty-four. It talks about main entrance and welcome center, and it, exterior. It says sustainable weather resistant, vandalism resistant seating, vandalism resistant garden planters. I think we might wanna consider not having planters, if you think of the planters outside Derby Street or Providence, they're kinda high maintenance because of frost, they swap out the plants in them seasonally due to frosts and other issues. Could we reword that to have either landscaping or in-ground plantings considered? If you look at Norwell, they have all in-ground plantings. We've discussed previously how we like the ornamental grasses in front of the Curtis Library in Hanover, those are in-ground plantings. And I think they're all more sustainable than planters, so I would advise against planters, maybe just put landscaping.
I'd, I would say low maintenance.
Yeah.
Use that.
That sounds good.
And I agree with the planters, that's why I didn't want them out here either, because you have to have someone maintaining them and.
Low, so low maintenance landscaping?
Yes. I think that, that covers a variety, whether you have a couple of trees, you have the grasses, you have some low growing.
Budget friendly.
Yes.
That's what we're all about, budget friendly, I said, budget friendly, that's what we're all about.
Low maintenance, sustainable.
Green, green.
Okay.
Okay.
Probably consider adding for that.
I'm almost done, I'm just patient. Outdoor reading and creative learning space, the garden.
Page?
Forty-six. I love the concept, I'd like to reconsider the name. It's described as a space to read, explore, learn, work on projects alone or in small groups, contemplate the natural native gardens surrounded in the library, find a place of respite, designed to accommodate gathering up to hundred people. What about a courtyard instead of garden or name?
Why, I like garden, I like that idea.
Yeah, I do, too.
I don't think it's inclusive enough.
I, I think nowadays, like when, with libraries, when you say garden, it doesn't just mean like what you think, like a household garden.
Yeah.
Like, it's kind of more, like, has a broader.
Sounds more active than a courtyard, courtyard sounds old.
Yeah.
I was thinking of like the courtyard.
I mean, courtyard too, I think of just like, like pavement, kinda like bricks or something.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm not necessarily, but we have different concepts, I was thinking of the courtyard at the Isabel Stuart Garden Museum as a sample.
Which is a garden?
Which is a garden.
Which is a garden.
Yes, but they call it the courtyard.
Actually, it says, it says in the paragraph, the garden could be in a courtyard or adjacent to the exterior of the building.
I like.
It's, it is combined.
Garden sounds like softer, like, not like, I feel like, than.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, but I also do see now that that is planters there, so we can change in the furnishings to the same thing, low maintenance landscaping.
I like planters.
Okay.
Patio.
And the other thing is, the other thing is, then when we're out there doing that, and whoever comes talk landscape, they may suggest a couple of planters, and after you hear what to say, they say, you may decide on that, and it's okay that it doesn't exactly match up there.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't gonna be an official name for whatever they're creating, it's just a guide to, I mean, you know.
Okay.
And the.
But overall, outstanding document.
The, one thing I forgot to mention is, so say that the town goes for the three fields there, the play area will be in the front. And, you know, they're gonna have all extra parking and stuff, but the play area for people to bring their kids during the day, weekends, whatever, is going to be in front of the fields. So that way, there's more likely people going by activity, so you're not like way in the back like it is now, and like a lot of people have said it's kinda creepy out there. I never brought Zach there, I always went to Whitman Park, so, well, he had a play yard in the back, so he didn't.
He built that lot, but.
I'm sorry, it's not that it's not nice of the quality, it's, a lot of parents have said.
The only place you could go.
You know, they go there sometimes during the day, and it's just them and the kids, and they just feel safe.
No, you're, because you were secluded by this giant building in front of you.
Right, exactly, so they're gonna have it in, and it's going to be larger, it's like, the footprint looked larger to me.
So they can all run into the street instead.
No, well, there'll be sidewalk there and other.
I did have one other question that I would like to ask about, on the seating and all, the cafe book sale area, display area, will food and drink consumption, other than like in a meeting room or something, I guess, or included in drinks, or having from the kitchen, and I guess that would be in a meeting room, will the drinks be restricted to the cafe area, do you foresee?
I mean, that would be a policy thing later on, that you would include in this.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Well, my question was, if it, is, if you foresee it being restricted, maybe we want more seats than eight in it, if you, you know, we're just doing the best guess right now, I guess, on what we'll need, but it does have an area of three hundred and fifty-six.
What page is that on?
Sixty.
Page forty-five.
It's a chart on page sixty.
Oh, sixty.
It does have a square footage of three hundred and fifty-six.
But where is it in the actual text, I can't, oh.
I was just looking at the reading seat numbers in the chart, okay.
Page forty-five. Let me see what we had.
On page sixty.
Oh, yeah, I can't really, maybe just.
So it's a good size room. Maybe you'd wanna consider more than eight seats, I thought.
Yeah, seat, okay, I mean, that doesn't mean capacity, but seat, it just means actual seats, so, so you think like ten, is that what, or fifteen, or, I mean, does any other?
Just going there, about twenty by. It's a room over fifteen feet by twenty, because fifteen by twenty would be three hundred square feet, so it's a good sized room, I'd go up to twelve even, I think.
So it's three hundred square feet, but isn't that someone else is gonna come in and run that?
Uh, we don't know now, I mean, just leaving it open for, that's too specific, I think.
Okay. Because we might not even have it, yeah.
Yeah.
Which may not exist.
When we went to wait at the Tusk Library, they had a vending machine for hot in cold.
Oh, yeah, well, that might be okay, I'm just thinking is, I'm thinking, you know, long-term maintenance and bugs, not into bugs.
Okay, so, I mean, just people think twelve is reasonable, then, they can.
Yeah, I think twelve is reasonable.
Anything else?
Does anyone have anything else?
Well, yeah, continue to look at it, and then if anything else jumps out at you, let me know.
I had just a couple little things, if you wanted to add, would you wanna add like a shredder, and I can email you those kind of things.
Oh, yeah, actually, shredder, that's good for, like, the staff area.
Page fifty-eight, workroom and library support.
Yeah.
I can email you the little things, so you decide.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, if you do wanna do that. And then let me just see if the date, because we wanna have this ready for the March twenty-sixth meeting, so, I mean, if there's anything else, if you could get it to me like a couple weeks before the March twenty-sixth meeting, so, like, the next couple weeks, just so I could put it together if there's any other changes.
By the eighteenth?
Yeah, like by the eighteenth or so, and then, actually, well, maybe a little, maybe the end of the previous week, because then.
Thirteenth?
Yeah, like the fifteenth, so I can get ready for that week, the eighteenth of the meeting. And then hopefully it'll be in a shape to be voted on, so.
Looking good.
All right, yeah, it came out really nicely, so.
It's looking good, it should be awesome.
All right, and that's all I had, oh, next meeting, yeah, the twenty-sixth, anything else?
I had a question, which you have maybe another question with the financial indirectors, or maybe, are you going to be sharing a proposal for the side work, work, sidewalk work with us to vote on?
Yeah, well, so we already voted to do the, like, to basically keep the color scheme the same, but just do concrete.
Right, but usually there's an estimate, and we see what is in.
Yeah, we voted on that already.
Yeah, it's the twenty.
I think the estimate.
Well, it's twenty, we have twenty thousand, we have the, that tell me.
Yes.
Yeah, up to twenty thousand, okay, like when we had the AV equipment, we had three proposals and we voted on it, we saw what was actually in it. So we're not gonna actually see the proposal, we've just heard a little description, and we don't have an exact amount, it's just up to twenty thousand.
Yeah, well, that's what the article, so it's up to twenty thousand that you.
That's what the article is, but I assume the company that is doing the work did an est, written estimate for us.
Yeah. Uh, Charlie handed all that, so.
I think it's probably our responsibility to vote on an estimate, it's okay, whether he handled it or not.
When are they starting the work?
Uh, we haven't, I haven't checked with him yet, they, and they said the spring, so I assumed like maybe April.
So why don't you send an email to Charlie and say, when are they, find out when they're slated to start, and say that you want the, a copy of what was drawn up, the estimate and everything. But we did vote to do up to twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
And to do.
So if the estimate comes within that, we're fine, and it didn't seem like when we had the conversation out there, that it was going to change, so.
But we usually do vote on the company and the estimate proposal.
I thought we had done all that.
I never heard a company name mentioned or a specific amount of the.
Well, sometimes you vote, like, you know, vote up to so-and-so to spend on, you know, for me to spend the this or that.
Yeah, Charlie came in here himself, he was here.
You don't necessarily always have a specific company, but, I mean, if you feel like.
Yeah, Charlie, remember, he came and explained everything.
But, I mean, I can certainly ask him to, and maybe get it for the March meeting, so that could be done in April.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't know, I just thought our policy was, oh, my, kind of expenditure after written estimate.
Okay, I make a motion to adjourn today's meeting at seven thirty-nine PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.